Good evening. Good evening. It's always so good to see so many folks here tonight. At this time, I will call the York County Council Agenda Meeting to order for November 3rd, 2025. Our first item is to recognize the Honorable Watthuckabee from District 6 for invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you with humility and gratitude as stewards of this community. In a time when perception often clouds truth, grant us discernment. As council members, help us lead with integrity, wisdom, and encourage our citizens to see not just what they fear or assume to be true, but what is real, just, and truthful. We thank you for our dedicated York County staff, for their vision, their tireless effort to achieve our collaborative goals, and their commitment to carrying out our mission through the strategic plan that guides us. May their efforts continue to bear fruit for all who call this county home now and in the future. Please allow our county to remain a safe place to live, raise our families, and run our businesses. Let our actions be rooted in compassion, courage, and conviction as we uphold and enforce our laws while keeping those who serve and protect us safe. As we begin tonight's meeting, prepare our hearts and minds as we tackle the issues and opportunities for consideration. Encourage us to be open-minded to the needs of today and the visionary possibilities of tomorrow. Let us be bold in vision, careful in judgment, and united in purpose for the good of York County and all of its people. In your name, I pray this prayer. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance?
To the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we do not have any oath of office, so we move straight into our appearances. And one of the things that we have the honor and privilege of is to recognize our first responders who assisted with the Ori County Wildland Fires from March of 2025. And I'm going to ask that the folks who are going to be recognized, if they'll make their way in. I know that we have a packed room here tonight, but if they can make their way in, and I'm going to turn, do we have, going to make their way in, and I'm going to recognize David Garner, Assistant County Manager, to say a few words.
Thank you, Chairwoman Cox. While our staff and responders are following in, I'll give a brief summary and background. So earlier this year, in March of 2025, Ori County experienced a devastating wildfire in the Carolina Forest Wildland Fires, what it was referred to. That was a situation that quickly overwhelmed the resources of Ori County. And one of the functions that we have available in South Carolina is firefighter mobilization, and that is a cooperative group of all responders across South Carolina. And so that was a request that went out through those statewide channels and who you see before you, including some of our other representatives that are in the room, were the ones that answered that call on behalf of York County. So we have representatives from numerous departments, county staff, volunteers, and other municipal staff. So not only did they provide personnel, but they provided equipment from York County to respond to that fire. I believe they went in two separate deployments, and each team was well-equipped, and when they got there, they went straight to work. So long hours with little sleep, we got several reports when they came back, and then we set a second wave. So tonight, we've asked them to come here. In June of this year, Ori County actually passed a resolution recognizing the statewide effort, but specifically York County, and they've provided that to the departments and responders that responded. So we've asked them to come tonight to be recognized for their dedication, courage, and everything that they bring to the table, not just daily, but particularly across the state, to serve our entire community. So we thank them with that.
Thank you, Mr. Garner. On behalf of the council, it's our honor and privilege to recognize our local folks for the work that they do and make York County proud. To see our emergency response personnel provide not only their time locally, but to give up and to serve our community and our state in other areas, it makes our county proud, and we're very thankful for what you do. To give up personnel and equipment from Bethany, Bethel, Bullet Creek, York, Hickory Grove, Fort Mill, Flint Hill, Bethesda, and McConnell's Fire Departments, along with York County Emergency Management and York County Fire Services, all of these individuals have demonstrated remarkable teamwork and commitment in support of our neighboring community in crisis. On behalf of York Council, we express our deep gratitude for the work that you have done, representing us with distinction and with the highest standards of duty, compassion, and professionalism. I do want to read the names of each individual because it's not often that we have this opportunity to get you all in a room, and we want to thank you appropriately. The responders that are recognized are Glenn Flowers, Brian Alley, Tim Mills, Michael Joyner, Randy Sandifer, Bradley Meckanich, William Polino, Jacob Hughes, Tim O'Connell, Kendall Barnes, Greg Cheek, Charlie Wells, Jamie McMacan, Chris Jones, Jay Smith, David Bortz, Tyler Gordon, Sierra Willing, Stephen McFadden, Joshua Berth, Carrie Vargo, and Will Mulling. And I do have a plaque that Ori County has put together, their resolution to present to you all for the work that you have done for them. We do want to present that to you and make sure that we get a picture with you with council now, but we do want to say thank you, and we appreciate your work. And on behalf of our community, thank you very much.
If y'all don't mind coming and circling around the front, and I will present this to you all if somebody can hold on.
Got everybody in. Everybody ready?
Thank you again, gentlemen. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
What a proud moment for our county. Now, it's another, this is one of those great nights at the council because we get to do the fun things. And we recently, just a few minutes ago, we were able to entertain a 4-H group, and it just amazes me how that group continues to grow and thrive and how big it is. With the tradition in our community of being an agriculture community, to see this group grow, it warms all of our hearts. At this time, I'm going to recognize Kristin Cooney, who is the Executive Director of the 4-H program, to come forward.
Thank you all for having us tonight. Thank you for interacting with our children and helping me show them how our county government operates. I'm really appreciative of that and letting them see the skills that they learn in their 4-H clubs in action here in our community. I did want to take a second to introduce you to my new right-hand girl. You guys were very, very gracious and helpful in allowing me to get a program assistant, and today's her first day on the job. This is McKenna Johnson. She grew up in York County 4-H. She started when she was five years old and really just understands the heartbeat of what we do. And then she interned with me last summer and interned with the state 4-H office for a year as well. So she's well-equipped to help us and help us continue growing. So this is McKenna.
Thank you all.
Welcome, McKenna.
We are also, we asked if you guys were willing to let our 4-Hers indulge you in the 4-H pledge tonight, and maybe you would be willing to join us. The words are going to be on the screen, so you don't have to memorize it, but if y'all would join me in standing and doing the 4-H pledge. Ready?
I pledge my head to clear thinking, my heart to greater loyalty, my hands to larger service, and my health to better living for my club, my community, my country, and my world.
Thank you. You can be seated. All right, I have a few that would like to just give a few quick remarks tonight. Up first is Mr. Noah McManus.
Hi, my name is Noah McManus, and my 4-H experience has been a great one. I learned showmanship while raising a pig for the swine project. I learned fascinating facts about chickens by doing the 4-H poultry show. I also did the greenhouse project where I learned how to start seeds and grow my own crops. I made memories with my dad by participating in the 4-H fishing project. By becoming the Secretary of the 4-H Edgemore Club, I had become more comfortable speaking in front of others. By participating in a blacksmithing project, I learned how to make a horseshoe knife and other things out of metal. Thank you, Ms. Kristin, for all that you do, and thank you to the York County Council for your continued support for the 4-H. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, and then we have Abby Ellis.
Hi, my name is Abby Ellis, and I live in 904 Torren Lane in Clover. I've been at 4-H for about four years. At first, I just joined 4-H just to pass some time, but it changed my life. Throughout the years of 4-H, I've seen people grow, met people I would never have met, and it has made me become a better person. 4-H has taught me other, me and others, to speak publicly, leadership skills, responsibilities, and many more important life skills. I have experiences I would have never had without my 4-H and my leaders. I have raised three pigs, and I'm going on my fourth. I've participated in the me and dairy goat project. I've done STEM activities, including bridge building and cooking classes. My favorite project so far in the 4-H years has been beekeeping and teaching people about the importance of pollinators. Thank you for your continued support in 4-H in York County and helping this program grow to reach as many as possible.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and then last tonight, I have Mr. Colby Allen.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Colby Allen, and I serve as the Public Relations Coordinator for the York County 4-H Team Council. I just want to take a moment to share how much 4-H means to me and to thank you all for the support that makes everything we do possible. So when I first joined 4-H, I never imagined how much it would totally impact my life. From showing animals to serving in leadership roles, I've learned so much about responsibility, teamwork, and overall self-confidence. Some of my favorite memories have come from helping our younger members and participating in livestock projects with my friends. 4-H has truly brought our community closer together, and I never expected it would truly do this. Thanks to 4-H, I found my voice and realized the power of giving back. It's shown me that leadership is about helping others grow and stepping up when it's needed. I'm proud to say that the skills I've gained have helped me be selected as one of just 12 youth nationwide to serve on the 2025 National 4-H Congress Youth Leadership Team. This is an opportunity I would have never imagined without 4-H and the people who have supported me along the way. Though a huge thank you to the county council for making all of this possible, your support allows us to try new things, take on new challenges, and represent York County with tremendous pride. On behalf of all 4-Hers in York County, thank you for everything you do, believing in us, and for helping us grow the next generation of agricultural leaders. Thank you.
And we do have a small gift of appreciation for you, so I'll have those who have bags come up, and we'll present those to you all, and we'll be done for tonight. Thank you all for having us.
Appreciate y'all being here tonight.
Thank you. Kristin, we thank you and your team for all the good work that you're doing in our community, and we appreciate all of the youth coming out and seeing what council is about for being involved in your community. Very well spoken, and we appreciate the work that y'all are doing. You're the reason why we sit up here is for the future of our community. Thank you very much. I know that, I'm not sure if y'all are planning on staying. If you want to scoot out, that way we won't interrupt folks who are talking. You're more than welcome to leave. We're going to move now to our public forum session tonight. This is an opportunity for folks in our community to get up and speak to council about matters that are affecting the community. And a couple of things, we do have a number of public hearings here tonight, five of them. We ask that individuals who have signed, if you signed up to speak, I'm going to ask you to wait and do that at the public hearing. That way, your comments will be connected to the item that is, that we're talking about. So if I call your name and you're here about something that's in a public hearing section, if you'll just let me know, and if you'll kindly wait until then, that way we'll be able to keep those comments in the right place. I do want to remind our audience and our speakers that when we conduct business in this council, that we are going to do so, and we're going to treat each other with absolute respect and civility and decorum. My job is chair, so make sure that we run these meetings appropriately and that no one feels slighted and that no one feels uncomfortable about speaking their mind, even if it's different than what most people in the room are going to do. So we do have a few rules when we speak. First, when I call your name, if you'll come forward, if you'll give your name and address before you start speaking, and if you have any connection to the item, please share that as well. If there are folks that are with you that share your concern, if you'll ask that they kindly stand up and they can acknowledge their agreement with you on an item, but we're going to ask that you hold applause. We're going to ask that you respect the individual who's speaking and not be talking while they're up here speaking. And we're going to ask that you refrain from any personal attacks. This is not an opportunity for us to speak back. It's an opportunity for us simply to listen. And so with that said, I'll start with the first individual up, Leanne Shattuck.
Good evening, council members. My name is Leanne Shattuck, and I live at 2597 Lower Assembly Drive in Fort Mill. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of thousands of fellow Fort Mill residents deeply concerned about the risks that the Sylfab Solar Manufacturing Plant poses to the safety of our community. Flint, Michigan taught this country a painful lesson. Disaster begins when officials ignore warnings and assure the public that everything is safe. At Fort Bragg, military families were exposed to drinking water contaminated with toxic forever chemicals for decades after officials knew the dangers. And in Deer Park, Texas, regulators documented safety failures at a chemical plant but took no action until an explosion blanketed the city with smoke and toxins. Each time, the warnings were clear. Each time, officials placed business interests over human safety. And each time, communities paid the price. York County now stands at that same crossroads. The Sylfab Solar Plant will store and use tens of thousands of gallons of toxic, highly flammable chemicals just a few hundred yards from homes and two schools, ironically named Flint Hill. These substances are dangerous on their own, but in these quantities and stored together, even a small leak could trigger explosions, fires, and toxic fallout that could spread for miles. Under the county's own safety codes, a facility storing this volume and combination of hazardous materials should be treated as a high-hazard occupancy, which is not allowed in a light industrial-zoned area like this. We implore the council to take immediate action and revoke Sylfab's temporary occupancy permit until the investigations and legal cases are resolved. Flint, Michigan didn't happen overnight. It happened because those in power looked the other way. Each of you now faces the same choice. Will you protect York County families, or will Fort Mill become the next Flint? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
John Gossett, 5717 Lake Wile Road. I'm sure y'all know where I live by heart by now. I'm going to read a comment. Y'all all got this on email, if y'all read it. This is a comment that I get, these all the time. This young lady's name Nicole Hansen Seaford, and it was a comment to me posting that everybody, reminding everybody to get their emails in about the impact fees. Nicole writes, "I sent an email as well. I bought my home in 2020, and since then, between property tax and homeowner insurance increases, my mortgage is almost double. With this year's increase again on both my mortgage, it will go up again as soon as they evaluate my escrow account. If they don't pass the impact fees at $15,000, it will result in another hefty increase for me again. I cannot afford another increase. You are pricing people out of their homes. The council has to approve all these subdivisions that put the burden on our schools, roads, et cetera, correct? So charge the people who are moving here instead of screwing the people that already do over and over again. Or maybe stop allowing subdivision after subdivision after subdivision being built, one after another after another." And then last council meeting, one council member suggested that we don't pay enough taxes in District 2 now. I mean, we got, I've said it before, we got people who are one tax increase away from losing their homes, losing their land, losing their cars, losing what they got. This is a vehicle, our impact fees is a vehicle, it's a no-brainer, that you put the tax burden on the people who were causing the burden in the first place. They pay their fair share upfront. So for this council not to approve the $15,000 impact fee is just flat-out wrong, and it screws the people who've already been living here all along.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Sherri Kerlik. I live at 1111 Long Creek Court, and I'm here again to speak with the impact fee because I emailed all of you about the impact fee after I was speaking with you the last time, and with the exception of Andy, I heard back from no one. The problem that, as I see it, is an impact fee follows a law. The state legislator wrote it. The legislator set forth the requirements to qualify for the impact fee. Then they put the standard to determine the impact fee. The Clover School District followed the law. It followed the requirement. It followed the standard, and it gave it to the U. Your job is to adhere to the law as written, not as you would like it to be, not as you think it would be best. There is a quality of equal protection under the law in the United States for all communities. There is no difference between the impact fee of Fort Mill and the impact fee of Clover. They are separate studies. They take into account the demographics of each community. That is part of the process set forth by the state legislature. The York County Council, to pull a number out without any legal basis, without anything other than, I think this number would be really good, without any explanation as to why the Clover community does not qualify for the impact fee as stated by the state legislature, as determined by every other community across the nation, with any reasoning or logic besides they're different communities, is an unfair treatment to the citizens of Clover. We've paid the 10 millions of dollars because of the first mistake on the impact fee. We compromise to lower it to 15 to right the wrong. Please don't make the same mistake twice and cost us tens of millions of dollars again.
Thank you, ma'am.
John Paloka, 3034 Ranger Road. I'm in full support of the impact fee. New growth should pay for new growth. Another district did the same study. It passed almost $30,000 for the impact fee. Same study, same company, for Clover, they're only asking for 75% of the recommended amount, $15,000. 50% less than the other district, or I can say, double of what Clover is asking for. Mills, I live in Clover. My child lives in Rock Hill. Mills are higher in Rock Hill, but it's based off of an assessed amount. The Mills are lower in Clover because it is based off of the actual amount. When I broke it down per square foot, Clover pays a dollar a square foot for their fee. Rock Hill pays 71 cents per square foot for their tax base for the schools, okay? And it's perceived that Clover doesn't pay their fair share. Another article I read that it is everyone's job up here to grow the tax base. Whoever sits up there is not the school districts. Allowing this impact fee will help the community and keep taxes lower. I understand the sensitivity of family land, but even if there is a home built on there, it still affects the schools. I don't have enough time, so I know I'm going to be seeing you all in about two weeks. I'll close with this. The very last dairy farm was sold in Charlotte, 200 acres. $24.6 million, and the developer's still going to make money. Think about that, please, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Jeff Ledford, 2095 Cutter Point Drive, Lake Wiley. Normally, I'm up here speaking for the Lake Wiley Chamber of Commerce. Tonight, I'm going to just speak as a citizen of Lake Wiley and of Clover School District. I noticed on your website earlier today that you have an organizational chart. Just so happened, you showed it earlier, and it has the citizen at the top of the organizational chart. Coincidentally, I ran my businesses with the same philosophy, that we all work for the customer, or in this case, the citizen. We all know that you can't please everyone, but I believe as elected representatives, you owe it to follow the will of the majority of the citizens. So let me put it this way. Someone mentioned at our last meeting about compromise, and I believe in that. But let's think about it this way. There's an old lady that she just lost her driving privileges. She has this beautiful car, very low mileage, great shape, and she needs to sell it. The experts all value that car at $21,000, but she decides she's not going to be greedy. She's going to ask for $15,000. And then somebody comes up and offers $7,000. That's not a compromise. That's offensive. And finally, I have to ask the question, why do so many people want to live in the Clover School District? I believe we all know why. It's a great place, and it's a great school system. So I believe people are willing to pay for where they want to live. And my last point, I'm having trouble following the thought process that Fort Mill doesn't have family farms, that the family, that the families don't want to build homes on for their family. I believe they do. I've driven a lot of places around there, and I've seen it. Fort Mill gets their fair share of the impact fee, and we don't. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Franklin Pendleton. I live at 110 Jamestown Circle, Clover. I spent 24 years serving the Clover School District on the school board from 1992 to 2016. During that period of time, the county council would notify the school board when a resounding request was needed to create a subdivision. If a resounding wasn't needed, we weren't contacted. When we were contacted- When we were contacted, we were asked what our capacity was in the school in which the zoning was being redone for the subdivision. We always responded, had the capacity, gave the numbers that were in the school. During my 24 years as a school board member, we spent, I believe, four elementary schools, two junior highs, and we band-aided and band-aided and band-aided the high schools. The band-aid for the high school is over with. The time for letting the people don't pay the way coming in need to pay their fair share. What is that fair share? The studies have been done. We all know what that amount is. It was fair.
Thank you, sir. Brittany Terry.
I'm Brittany Terry, 5039 Mill Creek Road. I'm a teacher at Clover Schools. Eight years ago, my husband was offered a job at Disney World, the happiest place on earth. But before we dug into the brochures on free cruises, I looked up the local schools and immediately vetoed the job. As a parent of three school-aged children, schools are my top priority. They determine where we live, where we work, and where we invest in our community. So he accepted a different job without free cruises and opted for a much longer commute from Clover instead because of their schools. This is the eighth state I've lived in as an adult, and in all those places I've lived, I never once knew the names of my city or county council members. But here, before I even met any neighbors, I knew the name of my county council member. She was well-known, respected, and deeply connected to the community. So when no one ran against her in 2020, I wasn't surprised. Who could possibly beat her? But when she turned her back on our schools, the community took notice. In a county where schools are the heart of our community, that choice cost her her position. Now I serve on the leadership team for CAPE, Community Action for Public Education. We make it clear who the pro-education candidates are, and the community listens. The only local candidates who have won in recent years are the ones who stood with our schools. That's not a coincidence. That's the power of a community that refuses to accept less for its children. People move here for the schools. They stay here for the schools, and they vote based on who protects those schools. Growth is happening whether we like it or not, and our community can't keep absorbing the cost. Taxpayers can't keep absorbing the cost. Developers and our county council must do their part, and if you don't support them and learn from other council members' mistakes, we'll find others who do. CAPE will not name any candidate pro-education unless they support schools across York County. We're watching, and so are thousands of families who care deeply about the future of our schools.
Thank you, ma'am. Scott Kokenauer.
Scott Kokenauer, 122 West Oak Street in the beautiful Whiteville Park neighborhood downtown Fort Mill. Unfortunately, I was ag at Aneeland High School for two years, a horticulture of two years, and I picked about 40 tomatoes before I came here today. So good things from 4-H Club. Still getting vegetables from that today and everything. So just a little update on some stuff going on in Fort Mill. The band competitions, all the high school bands went to Band of America in Atlanta this weekend, and they all, the 12 bands, Fort Mill came in fourth, NAFO came in second, and Catawba Ridge came in first, so good things there. First-time flag, girls' flag football in the county, and Fort Mill High School won the girls' flag football championship. So you're gonna start hearing more about that. I think it's a great thing, another activity that kids can do and things along that line. So, and from Clover's standpoint, we had Catawba Ridge with a Clover Friday night, went overtime. So Catawba Ridge converted, two-point conversion, won the game. So we'll get a home game at the Pitt Friday night. We'd like to invite everybody there, 7:30 kickoff. Fort Mill High School's coming in, so it should be a great time. I know our band's coming, we're trying to get the Fort Mill band to come. So if you recognize a voice, if you're there, that's me. I'm the PA announcer at the Pitt. Unfortunately, I've been able to announce games at all three high schools over the years, so along that line. But I hope to see everybody there at the Pitt Friday night. I am 100% in favor of the Clover School District getting their full amount requested. So that's where we are with that. So hey, thank you for your time. Service.
Thank you, sir. Beth Crosby.
I'm Beth Crosby, but I'm speaking at a hearing for the neighborhood at Newport.
You have a public, public hearing? Okay. Thank you, ma'am. It looks like Will Cantus is for a rezoning. Okay, public hearing. All right, that concludes our public forum session. Appreciate all the comments and individuals coming out to speak tonight. Do we have a motion or consent agenda?
Motion to approve, second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Consent agenda is approved. We move now to our first public hearing item. Rezoning action, hold a public hearing and consider second reading. Case number 25-17. Is this one of the ones that we had corrected tax map numbers? Or is this corrected on this form? What's on the form is corrected? All right, thank you, ma'am. Tax map number 498000023459111237607475. To rezone from RUD, GC, and PD to PD and GC, 97 acres in District Three. Is there anyone here, do we have any comments from management before we open the public hearing? Nope? All right, is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this rezoning? Is there anyone who wishes to speak? I'm looking at...
I'm talking about the 161 or Hold Door Road. Annapolis.
Newport. All right, if you'll come forward and give your name and address before you speak and any connection to the development.
My name is Beth Crosby, Elizabeth Crosby, and I live at 1319 Lincoln Road in York. And I wanna speak about this because in York, we have basically two ways out of York into Rock Hill. We have Highway Five, which is small, you know, it's a two-lane, and we have trucks and that going in there. It's very hard to travel, and it's very slow. I go to church 10 minutes from my house, five miles from my house. It can take me 20 minutes to get up that road because of the slow traffic. I don't expect you all to fix that. But a new neighborhood was built there at Park Place and Highway Five and completed earlier this year. Then we had the one at Shiloh, right before the Dollar General where the grown-up car is, I think that Shiloh Road, was approved over the summer to put neighborhoods back there. So again, we have people on Highway Five, or they can go across to 161. We've also had the area right there at Newport, where the Walmart is, that new development, that's 100 and something properties. Again, they're gonna go on 161. And then this fourth property that you're talking about, again, Selene's Road, 161, right there at the DMV, right there where you're turning to go on 274, which is the main outlet for several people. If you drive that with any regularity, then you know you do not get in the right lane like you're turning to go to the DMV unless you're gonna turn there, because the traffic is backed up way past the dry cleaner. So that leaves essentially one lane. If you're gonna turn left onto Adnan Church Road, thankfully, there's Winterberry, which is that little shortcut, but I'm sure those nine people who live on that road do not appreciate the number of people, including me, who take that shortcut. You add a bunch of cars there, and there's gonna be even more traffic right there. Adnan Church Road is marked as a 35 and 45, a little teeny bit of 55 miles per hour. People don't go those speeds. I try really hard to be a law abider, and I literally use my cruise control so I don't get stopped on that road, because I know people who have. So that's only gonna be more congested. There's farmland out there. There's people who are not gonna drive fast. None of those roads are particularly well-kept. Thankfully, before we built the big development in front of Walmart or beside Walmart, you did a nice, beautiful paving project and added a right turn lane. One turn lane for all those people. So I'm wondering with the addition of the middle school coming up on 161, how on earth...
Yes, there's a York Middle School.
I wanna remind the folks that when there's an individual up here speaking, I'm gonna ask that, what we said before, that we respect the speaker and we not have any folks speaking out.
So yes, there's a middle school. It's a little farther down, I guess, into, outside of Rock Hill proper, more into the county, but that's more and more traffic there. So my question then is, with the infrastructure that we currently have, it does not seem to be sufficient for the people who already live there, drive there, work there, or leave there. How on earth are we gonna accommodate the people who are coming with these additional three developments? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak against?
Will Cantus. I live at 4013 Ivywood Drive, basically behind the new proposed rezoning zone there. And I have to agree with the traffic congestion that we already have there. Not even the new development that comes, that's not in place yet next to the Walmart, it will be chaotic. The other thing, schools. We don't have enough schools to get all those kids through. It will be, I cannot, I cannot see the future there. It's, it will be a, a traffic congestion. It will be, I don't know what to say. I just stop here.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak against this rezoning?
I live at 715 Sandside Drive in York, so right down the street from this new development. And I do drive down that road, travel into Charlotte a lot, so to get to 77, that's my main way to get. As mentioned, traffic's really bad. I know it's proposed that there's gonna be a right turn lane added going, you know, down to Lake Wiley area, but that doesn't really help if you're coming from, you know, York down into Rock Hill. How is that really gonna help us? You know, unless you're coming back and you're turning down onto 160, that doesn't, that doesn't help the flow of traffic this way. So I definitely think that should be looked at. Another thing is, I don't know if y'all can have a say on what businesses go in there. I know the one in Walmart, you know, it's a McDonald's. I think it's Scooter's Coffee, which is right down the road in York. Just, you know, more fast food and places, like to make it something actually that's gonna benefit the community and folks there, some more high-quality tenants. If something's gonna be there, I'm sure it is, but at least if y'all are able to have a say on the quality of tenants that are gonna go in there. And I know it was proposed before, from listening at the notes, the number of like green space and amenities. I would ask that y'all at least vote for the maximum amount of green space and amenities and not just, you know, the storm drain, storm ponds with the extra benches and things like that, but maximize how many of the grand trees have to be kept, how much of the green space, you know, if they can put parks in there, or at least things like that to try to keep some of the greenery and natural area. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tiffany Hudson. I have no plans to address you tonight. My address is 432 Brook Hollow Drive in York here. I came to support our 4-H, but in issues with traffic, I do wanna echo some of what has been said. We are right here on Highway Five. And one thing that I've not heard mentioned tonight is emergency preparedness to those roads and to that traffic. I used to be able to know that my husband would be home at 5:23 every day, and just since the new subdivisions have come in on that road, I don't know predictability of when it's gonna come. And it's really pointed out to me the unpredictability of those roads. That one way in and one way out of both of those angles is very difficult, but when thinking about emergency preparedness and vehicles trying to get through, that is another concern, not just the inconvenience for us as residents in those areas, but also that our emergency preparedness can get to where they need to go as well. Thank you.
My name is Lila Cameron. I live at 127 Brookwood Circle. In addition to the traffic, if you ever go on Brookwood Circle and try to get out, you're sitting there sometimes three, four minutes because of the traffic. But it's more than traffic to be considered. We have wildlife in that area. There is light pollution. There would be heavy trucks. There would be toxins. There's a lot more than just traffic when you add commercial space and more homes. We already have put up a fence around our property. We already had our pond done a baseline. We have already talked to the people that are building the Newport Commons next to us, because they drain those ponds up there and just let it run over our property. So we've already discussed it with them. We've already, no, anyway, we had it out with them about it, but they were nice to fix it. But there's more than traffic in that area. And I know people are worried about traffic, but there, again, like I said, commercial trucks coming in, light pollution, just a lot of things that can affect the wildlife and the people who have lived in that area for quite some time. So think about a lot of things, not just traffic.
That is, it reminded me today with that so many new people coming into the Walmart area and then this proposed area, there is not enough emergency response, and that's something huge to consider. Just today, my mom was coming down Adnan Church Road, and somebody got in a wreck right in front of her, and she was the only witness. So she did the right thing and stayed there to give her statement, and it was an hour and a half before a police officer showed up. So imagine all the amount of people coming in here, what that's gonna do to response times. So that's definitely something I would consider. And then I know earlier I mentioned the businesses, and that in this proposed plan, it looked like there was another gas station. I would say, you know, that shell's been there a long time, and to think of if we add another gas station so close, what's that gonna do to their business? You know, so I don't know if that's set in stone, the other gas station, but just something to consider, you know, if that shell could just be incorporated versus basically them probably having to close up because of a brand-new gas station. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak against?
Hello, my name's Ben Cameron. I live at 128 Brookwood Circle. Like she was saying, light pollution. I mean, if you're coming from Rock Hill that way, anytime after 3:00 PM, traffic's, you're sitting in 30 minutes of traffic just to get, and that's right now. If any, any day, any weekday, you'd get stuck in traffic. But, you know, I've heard rumors of a target getting put there too, so it's like not only light pollution, taking away our wildlife, our little peaceful, little serenity away from the city, crime, noise, all these things that, you know, we live in the country to kinda enjoy and get away from. You're bringing it right to our front doorstep, and we don't necessarily want that. That's my take on it.
Anyone else wish to speak against? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
My name is Alex Bonda with Prestige Land and Site Works, 820 Forest Point Circle, Charlotte, North Carolina. With me is Greg Wilson with Rise. We do have a, and hopefully this is the right time, we do have a small presentation. If we could bring that up on the screen.
And Greg Wilson, Rise Barters.
So, yeah, I'm Alex Bonda with Director of Entitlements with Prestige Land and Site Works. We are the majority property owner of the property as of today. There's, I think, one parcel, thank you. There's one parcel that Rise is under contract for their commercial portion, but everything else, Prestige is the owner. And we're teamed and under contract with Rise to sell them the commercial pod that you'll see on the plan. A little bit about Prestige, we're a, we're a turnkey land development company, so we take everything from, from land entitlement... we take everything from, from land entitlements through land acquisition, take it through the permitting process and approvals, and as well as actually going in and developing the property, putting in the infrastructure, doing the version control, the grading, et cetera. And then our, our business models, we sell finished home sites or lots to regional and national home builders.
Again, Greg Wilson, I'm a principal with Rise Partners, and I want to thank you guys for your time tonight. So I'll, I'll kind of jump into this, but some history on this site, in two thousand, in two thousand and eight, PD was approved, and it was approved for one hundred and forty-five thousand square feet of office, two hundred and ninety-five thousand square feet of commercial retail, eighteen units per acre, and then four units per acre on the back fifty acres. That, that was all approved back in two thousand and eight, and Prestige, who currently owns it, could, could do those uses by right. We're under contract to buy the, the front thirty-five acres. A little bit of history on, on Rise Partners, we specialize in, in retail development. I've got two partners, we're based in Charlotte and Chattanooga, Tennessee, and acquire, develop, and redevelop shopping centers all across the southeast. So we specialize in, in retail and thought this site was best suited for retail development on the front. What, I put a, a plan up on the right that shows kind of the high density. When we had our neighborhood meeting several months back, we talked to a lot of the neighbors in and around, and a common theme we heard was that they didn't want high-density residential, again, which is allowed at eighteen units per acre here. So I pulled up this plan, it's, it's just kind of indicative of six hundred and thirty apartment units that could be there. So instead... Well, I'll just start, so instead, we wanted to focus on the commercial, and so, sorry, just on the wrong plan. So here's, here's the, here's the site plan. It's got one hundred and forty-eight thousand feet of, of commercial space, an anchor tenant, it's one hundred and forty-eight thousand square feet, shops around it, and some outparcels up front. So that, that's kind of the retail side. Sorry. Think I'd be young enough to understand technology.
So I wanted, I wanted to add to, to what Greg said, so when, when we went under contract on this property almost two years ago, you know, what was, what was placed in front of me was, was the old PD that was approved in two thousand and eight, as well as a draft preliminary plat. And I have a, I have a planning background, I did that professionally for eleven years prior to coming to the development side. And I saw the, the potential of this, this, this project and this property, I also saw the potential that it could be improved upon greatly. So between then and now, you know, we, we acquired not only this original PD property, but also an additional, I believe, eleven acres that we tacked onto it. That was intentional not to gain density, but to, to create better connectivity, create blocks. Instead of, if you've seen the old preliminary plat, there's a lot of dead ends, a lot of cul-de-sacs and T-turnaround dead ends, and that's just aesthetically not pleasing, there's, there's emergency and fire response issues with that type of layout. So we wanted to take it back through the drawing board and, and make this a more cohesive through mixed-use community. I mean, the, the old PD had some good bones, but, you know, again, like I said, I knew we could, we could, you know, build upon it, you know, not only trying to create more connectivity vehicular, you know, in a vehicular manner, but also adding quite a bit more pedestrian connectivity, not only in the residential side, but within the commercial. And then open space as well, the old PD had twenty percent common open space area. We are, we're doing a minimum of thirty percent common open space, and plus, when you add in the eleven acres to that, it's, it's even more, it comes out to about twenty-nine acres total versus the seventeen acres that was in the old PD. And I'll, I'll go into the, the residential plan after commercial.
Yeah, so here's, we had, we're not able to disclose the anchor tenant, but they have authorized us to release this rendering that shows the site-specific design of the, of how the store would look. Again, it's one hundred and forty-eight thousand square feet. We did bring some of our team here to talk about the, just a couple of slides. I've got Jack Johnson with ForeSite to talk about the civil design and the site plan, and then Matt Root, who, who will talk about kind of the overall architectural. And then we've got, I know some traffic questions have come up, so I've got Nick Burns, who did the traffic study with Impact Designs and worked with York County Traffic and also SCDOT. Matt.
Thanks, Rick. I'm Matt Root with MJM Architects. The, the main thing we're just showing here, this is, of course, the, the, the anchor tenant and the buildings themselves will all submit their final elevations for approval as part of the permitting process. But we wanted to show, this is an example of the design, these are pretty close to what they, they're going to do, there might be some minor modifications, but these show how we're meeting the design requirements in the master plan that's approved as part of this, or that's set here for it to be approved as part of this master architectural plan and this PD, both in terms of entry feature designs, colors, materials, articulation, modulation, screening, and glazing requirements. All of that is all based off of the, the, the new code and as modified for this. We have both of, and so an example of what the, the, some of the shops buildings might look like, again, just using the, the, all of the articulation, modulation, and design features that are included in the master architectural.
Jack Johnson, thirty-seven forty Da Vinci Court, Feature Corners. I'm the civil engineering consultant, so thank you, council members, for the opportunity to speak. I really wanted to focus on the...
Can you speak into the mic? I'm having trouble hearing you.
I really wanted to focus on the commercial amenities. That's something that we work with staff quite a bit on throughout the iterations of how we've been designing this. And you can see on the screen in the commercial area, behind what shop, what's labeled as Shops B, so you come in off, off Old York, one sixty-one, and you're heading down into the residential area, and there's some green space that we've incorporated in there. I have a, a blow-up of it, I'll go to, well, first the, the pond, let me go back to that record. So this is, if, if you're coming in off one sixty-one, we have an amenity area here, and, you know, it's conceptually laid out right there, but it's a gathering space, benches, there's trees, it's a space for people to gather there. And then we also have behind the pond, behind the, the anchor building, excuse me, there we go, there's a pond and with, that's been amenitized, there's these soft-surface trails around it that'll connect with all the trails throughout the, the PD, they're all connected. Let me back up to the overall plan, you can see. So we are meeting all the open space. We had proposed an amendment in the PD, staff recommended to, to stick with the PD, with the original code, which we're fine with. That was the forty percent of the open space being less, fifteen percent slope or less, we're fine with that. We've, since the original discussions with staff and all that, we've looked at that, and that's, that's fine. We're, we're good with sticking with the base code. We are meeting all the open space requirements of thirty percent, and what I was speaking about with the amenities, they're all connected there with the trails that you see. It's kind of hard to see at the scale on the screens, but the, the brown lines are the trails that are going through the natural areas around the ponds, and they'll connect back up to the sidewalks. Just in the commercial area alone, we have about six thousand linear feet of sidewalks that'll connect up to sidewalk along Adnanah Church that we're putting in, and sidewalk along Old York. And again, those will connect to the trails. And, you know, the amenities were discussed quite a bit with staff and, and throughout the, with the design team. And, you know, we're, the code allows, you know, you could just put a bench somewhere and call that an amenity. So what we're trying to do here is, you know, make our amenities a little nicer, so that's the space behind Shops B. What I was speaking about with the seating area and everything is a, is a, is a spot that, you know, I envisioned somebody, you know, coming up from the neighborhood that can stop there, go to one of the shops, get an ice cream cone kind of thing, and, and visit that amenity space on the way back kind of thing. And then, you know, the trails, again, will connect around the pond and go back to the other side of the, the residential road to have a nice connectivity throughout. That's really what I wanted to highlight on in the commercial area is that those amenities, I'm happy to answer any of the questions, civil-related. We do have Nick Burns here who can speak traffic. But before that, I know the residential team wanted to talk a little bit about the amenities in the residential area. Thank you.
For the, for the residential pod, what, what we're proposing is approximately sixty townhomes, they'd be twenty-four feet wide, front-loaded. And then we're also proposing one hundred and thirty-five fifty-foot-wide, single-family detached lots or homes, also front-loaded. Both the townhomes and the single-family detached would be part of its own HOA, likely the townhomes would have a kind of a sub-HOA within there, but it would all be under one HOA umbrella, and that would share the, the, the common amenities within the residential pod. We tried to design this layout to be more sensitive to the, the natural, the existing natural features on the site. I understand that it is development, there will be some grading, but there's some topography that we are staying away from within the, the, let's work here. Within the central area here, there's a, a draw here, a natural draw. It is, there's no wetlands in that area. We felt like that was a great spot to keep natural, not break into that area and create almost like, like a central park. It's interconnected with a bunch of natural surface trails that would also connect to the, the sidewalk network within the community. What we're proposing for, for length of trails, and this is both for the commercial and the single-family, is just over five thousand linear feet of trails, or point nine-five miles. And then eighteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-six linear feet of sidewalk, there'd be sidewalk on both sides of the proposed streets, and that comes out to about three point five-five miles, so four and a half miles worth of, of walkable area, safe walkable area. Like I said earlier, we're, we're proposing that minimum thirty percent open space. Within that open space are going to be several amenitized areas, both in the townhome area as well as the single-family and, and intermixed. In our Newport Commons PD code, there's a kind of a laundry list of, of potential amenities that would go here, that we could pick from, one of which would be a pool cabana amenity that, which would go in this, this area right here. That, that would also have, you know, mailbox kiosk located there for the single-family. A dog park, fence dog park, playgrounds. The storm ponds that are being proposed right now are, are actually wet ponds that would be amenitized with trails and, and landscape features, water features. So just some really quick highlights about that, about the layout here. Architecture, I know that's always a big, a big talking point with these proposed communities. These, these are going to be quality homes. There's, they're not going to be a, just based off market conditions, they're not going to be a first-time homebuyer type of home as far as, as far as the, the, kind of the market rate of what these will be. It'll be a mix of materials proposed here, no vinyl for, for, for the primary siding material, it'll be a mix of hardy board, brick, stone, stucco, et cetera. The only, the only thing we ask with vinyl is that it can be used for windows, soffits, and trim. We also propose a minimum of twenty percent of the single-family homes would have a front porch. I know that's important to some, I have one. It's nice to sit out on our front porch some evenings when it's not too cold and just kind of enjoy, joy of being outside. Also, we're proposing to soften the garage doors with, with carriage-style treatments and, and windows, instead of just having a stark white wall for a garage. Thought that was important as well to propose here. I mentioned market conditions, you know, these, these homes as of today, and that could change, you know, market-dependent in the future. The townhomes would start in the, the low to mid-three hundreds likely, and the, the single-family homes would start in the, the low to, to mid-four hundreds. These are just some representative imagery of amenities or amenitized areas that could go here, that's just representative, so it's kind of case by case what it actually looked like, but just some, some examples of the natural trail around the, the, the wet pond, which would be a storm pond, but wet and, and landscaped, dog park, playground, you've got the pool cabana in there, and some, some nice seating areas as well. And I think we're going to have Nick Burns, he's with Impact, and he'll talk about traffic.
Good evening. Nick Burns with Impact Designs. We did the traffic study for this development. One of the misconceptions that typically we get when I do meetings like this is that we can pick what we want to study and kind of do everything in the dark, but it's a very thorough process that we have to do both with SCDOT and the county. SCDOT has certain, certain thresholds for when you study an intersection and when you make an improvement. York County has the same and more stringent thresholds. So working through this traffic study, we ended up with five turn lanes, one new signal, one signal modification, and one safety improvement. And the turn lanes along Adnanah Church, starting at about Marion going south of the access, that's actually going to be a two-way left turn lane. You'll be able to turn into the development, and then there are the single-family homes that are kind of on the east side, they'll have that center turn lane where they could safely kind of traverse into their driveway. And then through working with DOT and the county, the safety improvement project is the project on Parham Road, which is a little bit off-site from the development, and that's something that DOT had kind of had their eye on, and the development has stepped up to the table to take on that project as a part of the rest of their improvements. Happy to answer any other questions, that's the base.
I have one question about traffic. Did you all consider a roundabout at the intersection of one sixty-one and two seventy-four? I know you have a railroad there that may prevent it, but was that considered?
You're talking about one sixty-one and...
Two seventy-four.
And, and for an intersection of that size, you get into the, the multi-lane, that hasn't proven to be very effective in most places I've seen it implemented, and SCDOT has no appetite for it.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question on the traffic. So the homes, townhomes, is the two hundred and forty-seven, is that a total unit, do you know?
I believe, as you say, one thirty-five and, I don't know, about one sixty-four.
Just for rezoning purposes, we're seeking a maximum. However, real to the plan, we're showing 60 townhomes and 135 single families, so I guess 195 total units.
Okay. What do you estimate number of trips? How many, what kind of number do you give each one of those in the way of how many cars are there per unit?
In just a general sense, I mean, I, single-family homes are about 10 trips a day and townhomes are six, seven?
So what would that equal to?
Going down from 247 to 195?
Yep. With your 10 trips a day and?
I mean, if they're, if they're single-family homes, which is what, 520? They're all single-family?
Well, you've got your townhomes, which are going to be more too.
It could be a mix, but?
Yeah. Okay. And then what kind of a value of trips do you give to your commercial?
In comparison with the residential?
I mean, have you done, in your TIA, did you do the numbers?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
I don't have the details of that section in front of me. I can get it, but that is all in the report, yes ma'am. The commercials typically the larger generator as compared to the residential.
Okay. That was my question.
Do you think that, that commercial businesses are going to put more traffic in that area than just the residential?
I mean, from a, from a generation standpoint, typically they generate a little more than residential. For areas like this, it's kind of interesting. You know, we have to project where people are going to and coming from based on existing traffic counts. And somebody mentioned earlier that the natural traffic flow along Old York kind of goes to the east toward Charlotte. With a development like this, you would almost pull from the other direction, so you could almost get a little bit of a balance.
We've done lost all balance.
There are a lot of factors to consider in this, but I think I would like to follow up on that question. What is the, have you done the analysis versus, to me, this, this plan was approved in 2008 before any of us was even sitting up here. What my question is, is, is do the changes that you're recommending generate more traffic?
From the 2008?
More traffic from the, versus the 2008?
It would be way less.
I know that y'all are dropping 630 apartments, so you're eliminating the apartments.
That's a good point. It's, so if you look up at the, you've got 145,000 of office, that is a higher generator than residential. Dropping that completely off, you're going from 295,000 of commercial down to 210. Those are large trip generations that are being reduced. I don't know the comparison necessarily on the single-family side, Alex, but it looks like it's about the same. So those are neutral. But your drops on the office and the residential, those are a large reduction in traffic from the 2008.
I think maybe, maybe getting some, some more details on that maybe before the next reading would be helpful. But typically, we don't entertain questions, but since y'all did a full presentation, I think asking those questions is most appropriate to do it now.
Well, I'll just jump in and say, you know, if you can imagine 630 apartment units, how many more people, how many more cars, how many more trips versus now total of 195? That's an automatic no-brainer. There's going to be less trips involved than that.
Right.
And obviously, when you add commercial, you want trips in for commercial because that's going to support the business, support the business and sustain whatever comes there. But just knowing that 161 is a natural traffic pattern, some of those trips generated to that location is already on that road. So when you start talking about TIAs, you want to know any new trips. And it's hard to determine new trips when, someone just said it, coming up 161, going to York or going to catch 274. It's a natural heavy floor of traffic anyway, so whatever that anchor store or those side shops are going to be, you, those businesses want to be in a high-traffic area. And so you can just imagine traffic veering off to go frequent some of those locations, some of those where there's restaurants, where there's shopping. So to sit here and think that they can just pull a number out to say new trips, it just depends on what's the location, because I live on the other side of town. If it's something there that I want to go shop at or eat at, I'm going to be the new trip, because that's not my normal traffic pattern. So, you know, I think we can get, get way ahead of ourselves asking how many new trips when, if, if I come here for a council meeting, yeah, it's, it's a lot of traffic on that road. It's 5 o'clock, it's 5:30. That's rush hour in any community. No, you can't think that we can just dissolve that by saying, "Don't build anything," but it's busy now. But if I had a business, I would want to be on a busy location because that says people are coming home. If I'm selling clothes, food, I want to be there so people can pull in, patronize my business, and get on home wherever they're going. So I had the opportunity to sit down with these guys and I didn't have as many questions then as, as I do now, but when I heard they were going from 630 apartment units, which the PD says if we turn this down, they can build 630 apartment units. I think that community is far better off considering what's on the table now versus them getting the property, putting 630 apartment units there as well as keeping the 145,000 square-foot commercial space, you know, you know.
This is sounding a lot like what we need to do on our motion, but if they're?
Let's get to it. I'm ready.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other questions, any other comments from the public before we close the public hearing?
I'd just like to make one request and apologize. I almost forgot about this. We was requesting two amendments to be added. The more, the more technical, the first, we're asking for guest parking being required for townhomes may be satisfied by both designated on-street and off-street parking spaces. And then the second amendment we're requesting is?
Where on street? If you're going to, if you're going to be proposing amendments, what street are you
There's, there's an area here next to the, next to the pond where there's no units that we can bump out. I'm just going to put in a, say an approximate amount, about 10 on-street parking spaces here. There's a, there's a guest parking requirement for townhomes. So the way it's written in the code is it just, it doesn't state that, it's not specific enough where it states you could include on-street parking in that calculation. We have the space for on-street parking to satisfy, I would say, about half of that park, guest parking requirement. But that was the reason for that request. And then the second request for an amendment, there shall be a zero subplot separation required, requirement for townhouse buildings, excuse me, let me restate that. There shall be a zero subplot separation requirement. Townhouse buildings shall have a minimum 20-foot building separation. The townhomes that you're seeing on the screen, they're actually the subplot lines and not the buildings themselves. Typically, you'll have a, depends on where, what municipality you're, you're at. Some are 16 feet. Charlotte, you can go down to 10 feet. In York County code, it says 20 foot between subplot lines. Since we're showing a five-foot separation between our building and the subplot line on the end units, we're requesting that we have a 20-foot building separation instead of the subplot separation.
Any other comments or questions from the public before we close the public hearing?
Can I ask him a question?
We've asked a bunch of questions, yep. I think that, I'll just say this, I do think that any comments, we need to have planning staff respond to that, these requests that are being made, whether it's done in our meeting tonight or otherwise. What's the question?
What, what is the width of that overall road going down through there?
I'm sorry, which, which road?
What's the, how?
Where you want the on-street parking?
What is your width of your road? That, where are you wanting to put the?
The road will be the county standards right there. It'll be, I believe, 26 feet wide from edge of pavement to edge of pavement. But what Alex is talking about is with that on-street parking, where they have the on-street parking, he's going to bump it out a little bit more to provide some additional asphalt width for the parking spaces.
Well, I know you'd have to, because I mean, just like Saturday, some of us experienced going through a neighborhood on a tour that we went on and they had on-street parking and there's no way fire trucks can even get down through there.
Yes, sir.
We're getting really far afield. You've made a lot of comments and even amendments that we've never entertained before, so unless there's, I have a hand up here. If you want to speak to the council, you have to come forward.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, just real quickly before he sits down, didn't you have a third exception, and that was for the pond behind the anchor tenant to be considered an amenity?
Yeah, that, that was the rendering we had, showing the, the trails and the benches and the fountain. We wanted to propose that we would add those to amenitize and be counted as one of the four amendments. So we originally asked for three amenities and we're going to agree to the four, or we'll go with the four amenities, the planning council and the council approved last week. But the fountain, the pond with the fountain would be one of them.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments before we close the public hearing, if you have one?
So this is a quick question. I just want to make sure, one of the things in the original plan was that they had a barrier between the property owners to the left and they were going to have trees and a barrier there, and I just want to make sure that has not been taken out. That was my first question. And the second question is, is, and this, I'm kind of new to York County, so please excuse me if I don't know this answer, but when you allow people to do a big retail store like this at all these other stores, do you, do they not have to tell you what it's going to be? I mean, can it just be anything that they put out there? Is there no requirement to know what's going there before it's put there? That's, that's those two questions.
Thank you, ma'am. We can, we can answer those.
So the one thing is the, is the border. I just want to make sure they're still going to do that.
All right. Any other comments before we close the public hearing?
I just, I heard the number 30% open space, and my question was, does that include the parking area? Because I'm looking at that and the math is not mathing for me. That was my question.
Anyone else?
Motion to close public hearing.
Motion and a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All's a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Motion. Commiserate district?
Motion to approve, but?
Second.
I'm going to definitely want to put some restrictions toward it.
Motion on the table is to approve in a second. Any discussion?
First, I'd like for the people to know this is in my district and this is in my district, and I tried every way in the world to figure out a way to stop it, but if it goes back to the old way, it's going to be even worse. There's been other comments tonight about the high-density quit approving all. I've never approved high-density and I don't think most of us that have been up here hadn't. We're dealing with stuff that they'll put in here in the late 90s and 2000s, and I want to see us come up with ordinance where we can actually do something about stuff like this that carries on. And then it comes to light, because you're talking about 2008, there's a lot that's happened in a lot of places since 2008, and we already got issues with stormwater and everything I mean, if I hadn't my choice about it, it wouldn't be going there, but at the same time, and, and this goes for a lot of areas, I don't know what we're going to do if people don't quit selling their land. And everybody has an as right, and in this situation right here, in a lot of ways, I would rather have the business than more houses, but I also agree, a lot of times, it would be nice to know what the businesses are that are going to be proposing to be there. But I just want most of, everyone in my district to understand that I ain't a bit happy about this whatsoever, but stuck with what's stuck with.
Okay. So I'm just feeling like I'm coming from behind. So this is a by right? By right?
You want to, so just so, and we can ask this question collectively, the understanding that council has is that this PD and this, this zoning for this property was approved in 2008. That's before any of us sitting up here was on council at all. It's our understanding that the proposed, the proposal that was in the original 2008 plan would have required or would have allowed the property owner to build 630 apartments, and that that has been removed and that they've replaced that with commercial. And as it stands right now, this would be less, less, less homes and less traffic than what the 2008 plan allows for. I would like management or planning to comment on that and make sure I'm getting that right so that we're consistent.
Yes, our planning director can, can come up and answer. I think, you know, the thing to remember is it's adding two parcels and subtracting one and reducing the number of housing units in total. So there's a couple of things going on, but Jonathan, I'll let you add, add more to that.
Yeah, that's right. So a part of this request is to remove some acreage and add some acreage, a net increase in overall acreage. But as you mentioned, Madam Chair, the overall net density, once the apartments are taken out of the picture from what was included in 2008, the density certainly does go, come down, as does the lack of any office space and the commercial square footage is also down. So down really across the board from what was 2008.
Since we got you up here, can I just ask, can I just ask the questions that were asked from the community? Is the 30% green space being observed currently in this proposal?
Yes, that's required by code. Any special district and a PD is a special district has to provide that 30% open space.
I think the question is where, is that, is that only storm ponds or is there, are there actual amenities?
So there are. So largely, it's going to include the spaces that look green on there, so I think I heard the, the question, does it include the parking areas? No, that does not include the parking areas. A portion of the stormwater ponds can be included as, as open space. There's some details on that in the PD standards that are particular to this development, but by and large, it's going to be the green spaces and does not include any paved areas.
The only question I had was the individual who asked about the buffers. Are the buffers from the 2008 retained?
That question, I don't know the specific answer to. Diane, have a?
The original buffer was along the edge there was 50 feet. It was reduced to 20 feet for this, for this PD here. And the reason was they, they labeled as being a 50-foot buffer, but they could encroach into the buffer. And so therefore, it really wasn't truly a 50-foot buffer. So it was reduced down to 20 foot, but I do believe they have actually more than 20 feet in that area there. But it was changed from the first PD.
To continue, since Jonathan is up here. Oh, you want to address that?
I can have the applicant, they can address why they chose to make that change.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. So we talked with staff quite a bit about that, and the plan that you're seeing here is generally the same plan that we presented at the neighborhood meeting. The reason for the change in the 50-foot to the 20-foot is the, is to reflect the current county code, and it's the 20-foot in the county code. So we applied our PD code to reflect that exact 20-foot buffer, but what we did is we pushed the townhome and the homes further off. So it's effectively, you know, technically, the line on the plan is 20 feet, but effectively, there's more buffer than that. That's, that's the reason for it.
You're right. I let him, did that answer your question? I mean, we're trying to answer questions here.
I would, I would recommend that you catch up, connect up with this.
I would, I would recommend that you catch up, connect up with this, with that individual. We've kind of done something different tonight.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Okay. So he just mentioned a community meeting. So was there, how long ago?
It was several months back. It is required for special exceptions and special districts that go through a rezoning request. So that is a requirement. They have to do a notice and a mailing. They have to talk to all the people that attended.
Okay. And the people that are here tonight that have questions and concerns, I'm just curious if they knew about the community meeting and if they went. You want to raise your hand if you went to the community meeting? Did you all know about the community meeting? Okay. I'm standing on that. That's an issue. Okay. And so the traffic, okay. So how do we know if they will not put apartments? I mean, if they're going to stand firm on townhomes and single-family homes?
Yeah. So they've committed in the standards that you all would approve as part of this application to not include that as an allowed use. So they would not have the legal right if you approved this amendment.
Okay. And then finally, can we get, I guess, next meeting, the traffic count, what they have come up with on trips and cars?
Yeah, we don't typically include the full TIA in your packet because often it's in the triple digits. So we can provide that to you if you'd like. And if you have specific questions, that we can drill down with their traffic consultant and get specific answers to. Happy to do that.
We might want to do another community meeting, just saying. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. The one question I had was, the slides that we had last meeting with the changes, are those being incorporated into this reading? Or was that, are those being requested as separate?
I think that's a good question. So as council's custom and practice is to apply any of the conditions that you approved on first reading or carry forward unless they're modified in some way. And the applicants have verbalized that there are three things that they would like to amend as part of your motion for second reading. I believe that's their intent to go forward.
Okay. I wasn't sure if that was just a presentation or if it was actually incorporated into this. All right. So we incorporated those as stated and not the staff recommendation portion of it.
So the staff had a number of recommended conditions or some things to consider to modify the PD going forward. The planning commission added, I think, one and modified another. So you all voted to approve what the PC had recommended at the first meeting.
Well, I don't think I really have any questions. I've met with the developer and I like the fact that they're coming off of so many apartment units and going down to a total of, I think it was 195. So I don't really have any questions for staff.
I think we're in, we're in discussion mode too. Is there anything else you want to add?
I missed my part. I don't want to stop yours.
Oh, I'll just, I'll just make my comments short and brief that, you know, like Tommy stated, this was approved back in 2008. Had it not been for the housing crash, what was going on in economy, this thing probably would have been built as it was planned to be built with all those apartment units. But fortunately and unfortunately, things happen. But I think this is definitely a better plan than what 2008 would have gave us if it was on the ground today. Can you imagine all the cars, the kids, the traffic and everything else that people are concerned about? I think it probably would have been relevant and an actual had these 600-plus units been built. So I think this is a far better plan. You know, like Tommy said, he's never been for high-density. This is density, but it's much lower density than what it could be. And obviously, you know, people, I know everybody wants to protect their surrounding. They moved out to the countryside as we call it. But things are growing. And if we don't take control of what's going on here, we see municipalities annexing property, moving further and further out. And they have a lot less restrictions and requirements to build and develop than we do. I think we're a little tougher because we want to protect a little more. But if we're not careful, we don't do anything, this could be annexed into the city. And they have a lot, a lot less requirements to build and do a lot of things different than what we require. So but I'm glad to see that there's more commercial coming, well, some commercial coming and not just flop down apartments, flop down townhomes, whatever. Because as we see in other communities, we're having problems with filling our schools up. This takes some pressure off what could be if there were just apartments. So I don't have an issue if the council member whose district it sits in, which I think his hands are pretty much tied, something's going there. Something's going in. I think gratefully, it's a PD, something that we can shape a little better than what we had before. So I don't have an issue with it.
Yeah, I'm going to fill in real quick. So I do like this plan way better than the old plan. I think it's better for the community, as I already said. You know, something was going here, it's already been approved. This is a much better plan. I'm glad we're getting revised. The number one benefit of this plan is that it's going to help the York School District. You know, they don't have their impact fees, but with the number of kids coming into, you know, 630 apartments and all the other stuff that's going to go with it, you would end up with a higher tax increase than you would have otherwise with the lower density. So this is, this is a much better plan, just from a school district point of view.
Actually, I think those kids would be going rock hill.
Yeah, I too, I too support the lower density of this particular project. I think the one thing that's a bit unfortunate, there's so much activity going on out at 161 and 274. There's a lot of chatter of future development out there, which means that there's a responsibility placed on our shoulders in York County to get our arms around how we can effectively move traffic a little bit better around that area. You look at Marion Street on this picture that you're looking up on the screen, see Marion Street to the right. Marion Street could theoretically connect over to Walmart to pull some traffic off of 161 and 274. And that's the hard work that the county's going to have to do to get ahead of the growth and actually intentionally plan it out so that we can divert some of this traffic off of our main corridors. And that is in the works.
Quick question, one more. Jonathan, are those retention ponds?
Yes.
Okay. And we talked in planning and zoning sometime, maybe last year or something, about this date business. You know, how long these projects were going to hang around? Didn't we, did we come up with a time? I forgot.
So when it comes to zoning, it's in perpetuity until it's amended. So when the council in 2008 voted for that PD to be in place, that entitles the property owner to that district in perpetuity until an amendment is passed, which is what's before you all today.
Okay. I think everybody's spoken. Jonathan, can you confirm that the traffic, traffic impact on this plan is less than what the 2008 plan was?
Yeah, all the numbers, the number of trips would have to be down based on the use mix and a lot of the residential, by the apartments being taken out from what was in 2008.
Thank you, sir. I'll support the motion. This, again, this is one of those things that was approved that we're having to deal with as council, that they have a by-right use. 2008 gives them certain rights. And this plan actually reduces the density and reduces the traffic, even though I think that it's going to be very difficult. And I sympathize with Mr. Atkins because I do think that there are traffic concerns in that area, that I don't know how it's going to be fixed. There is a group that's supposed to be looking at this from a small area perspective. And I wish that that had been done sooner rather than later. But this is, this is the, these are the cars that we've been dealt. All is in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Move now to our second public hearing. Rezoning action, hold a public hearing, consider first reading, case number 25-26. Tax map number 262-0000-024, to rezone from AGC and RUD. I think it's to rezone from AGC to RUD, 2.87 acres in District 3.
Good evening. Thomas Newland, Long Range Planner. Yes, the project is west outside the town of Clover. This area is predominantly rural in character. And looking more closely at the lot, you can see the applicant is proposing to subdivide the property and place a manufactured home here. From the aerials, you can see there already is a manufactured home that is a single wide. That has since been removed and the intention is to now put a double wide here. The structure at the front is the primary dwelling. And one of the sheds has also been removed as well. So here is a mock-up we did in our GIS layer, just to show some of the proposed lot lines that were brought for us. And the idea is that there would be easement to access the property in the back, what would become the double wide. And certainly during plan review, there will have to be some discussions about setbacks and buffers. But it is possible to divide this with enough land so that they both will meet the one-acre minimum in RUD. Zoning map shows this area is predominantly AGC, agriculture conservation. And you can see along Beam Guard, there are some spaces for RUD and rural development. And that is very much reflected in the feature land use map, which is predominantly agriculture, where we're trying to maintain farmland, timberland and pastureland. Staff recommends approval of this request, although it is not consistent with the comp plan. We see the property is currently non-conforming. Again, it's beneath that five-acre AGC minimum lot size. And this request will actually form two conforming RUD lots. And you can tell along Beam Guard, there are already some RUD lots present. By four to one, planning commission also recommended approval.
Any questions for staff before we open the public hearing? Thank you. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this rezoning? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I did a little bit of dealing into this. And we need to make sure that we look into amending so that we got a lot of lots like this that we're calling non-conforming. But I don't know how the parents are supposed to give their kids land to build on. And I sort of want us to look at, because they're taking a single wide off because of wanting to put a double wide is the only reason why they've got to make this change. And I spoke to the folks and they'd actually not liked to have to even split the property. But this is what it got them. And their child needs a place to stay.
Any other discussion?
A question. Would this, since they're replacing, it sounds like they're replacing a home here?
Yeah, because the double wide's bigger than the single wide. I don't know if I could explain it to us.
Actually, we, we, yeah, we need staff to answer that question, sir.
Would you mind repeating the question?
Are they just replacing?
Yes, so.
From a single wide to a double wide?
Yes. So the single wide is being removed. And usually, this, despite it being non-conforming, if they were to replace it with another single wide, it would still be under the grandfather's status and would not have to endure this. But considering they're moving to a double wide and they're outside, the square footage they would add would be outside that 10% oh-so-close rule that we recently created. And so they have to go for rezoning for it to work.
Any other discussion? I certainly support the rezoning. I wish that it didn't have to happen. I think it's a distinction without a difference. And I think that our code is just still not hitting it. This is the quickest way to get you what you need, though. All's in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Move now to third public hearing. Rezoning action, hold a public hearing and consider third reading, case number 25-30. Tax map number 714-0000-019 and 20. Rezone from AGC and OI to LI, 28 acres in District 7. Do we have any comments for management or anything before we open public hearing?
Just to remind you all, the path this has gone down, this is coming back for another public hearing because it's changed. So this item has changed quite a bit since you first heard about it. So just wanted to highlight that.
All right. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
I'll go first, real quick. Scott Coker, 122 West Oak Street, beautiful Whiteman Park neighborhood downtown Fort Mill. I sat on planning commission when the family brought the 6100 acres in. So there is a residential element on this property that by right they can build on. A few years ago, they announced that they're going to hold this back for commercial development. So this is a reference for everybody. That's the tentative plans. But there is a residential element that could go on this property behind it. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak in favor?
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Move now to item number four. Rezoning action, hold a public hearing and consider first reading, case number 25-38. Tax map number 658-0000-035, 37, 38, 36, 39, 40. To rezone from RSF 30 to NC, 1.74 acres in District 1.
So this is roughly a little under two acres, just outside the town of Fort Mill, the Riverview area, west of I-77. It's these six parcels kind of encompassed by SE Circle, Grady Hope Road and Sutton Road. So the applicant is proposing to consolidate these six properties and construct a multi-tenant mixed-use building with the potential for up to 11 upper-story dwellings. You can see a lot of this area is residential, but we do have some non-residential uses, including a place of worship and some commercial uses to the north. These six parcels in question are mostly single-family detached homes. So this is the concept plan overlaid with our GIS. The red lines underneath are the parcels and the black coming up from that are the parking lot. And the red buildings are, of course, where the commercial buildings will be. And the residences will then be on top of those. So the applicant isn't beholden to this, but you can see there are currently six spaces for retail and service operations. And the residential curb cuts will be removed from Sutton Road. The zoning districts, you can see most of this area is residential single-family 30. But like I said earlier, there are some non-residential uses, especially in this corridor. Sutton Road's going through a lot of change right now. And that's reflected in our future land use, where we have a lot of this designated for transitional area. And we expect these kind of developments. We're looking for homes to redevelop and assemble into office civic and more intense housing types. And our job is to make sure that remains compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. So we recommend approval of this request. It is consistent with the comp plan and future land use map. The proposed development will assemble these properties as expected. The proposed development will assemble these properties as expected and it will again remove those curb cuts from a major roadway, Sutton Road.
Thank you, sir.
By five-zero vote, planning commission recommended approval.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for staff before we open public hearing? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
Brandon Pridemore, eleven-eighty-sixth, Don Crest Boulevard. I'm here as the development consultant and consulting engineer for Daniel Kitchen, who's here to my left. He is Sunbelt Development Partners. He's just simply, he's purchased the property, owns it, and he'd just like to look down the road a little bit and try to find something that's a little more, I think, beneficial, I think, for the area, given that we're right between Mason's Bend and Baxter as we look at it, so this makes a lot of common sense, I think, to redevelop this area. And as well, you know, a lot of those homes are single-family, are single-family homes, but they're mobile homes and a mix of different uses in there, and he'd just like to, again, down the road, be able to consolidate and present something nice that the county can benefit from, so we're here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak in favor?
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Move now to our fifth public hearing. Resoning action, hold a public hearing and consider first reading case number twenty-five dash thirty-nine. Tax map number seven-one-six zero-zero zero-zero zero-five-four. To rezone from UD to GC, nine-point-nine-nine acres and District Seven.
So this property is north side of Fort Mill, between I-77 and Highway Twenty-One. The applicant is proposing to upfit the existing building, which you see here in white, and add a field house to operate a health club and fitness center. You can see a lot of this area is presently undeveloped. And here is a concept plan. You can see the proposed field house in yellow. The parking lot will remain the same and the existing building will remain and just be upfit. So the zoning is a bit interesting for this one as this property is a bit of a donut hole within the South Bridge Plan Development. And really what's key is trying to get this property to match what the future land uses that are going to be contained within this PD will have. So a lot of it will be these mixed-use districts that will also allow professional services, very similar to what is being requested here. And our future land use underlying is an I-77 corridor employment where we're looking for commercial businesses that benefit from that proximity to the interstate. And overlaying that is a community center node where we are looking for mixed-use walkable areas with a lot of services. Staff recommends approval of this request, and while it is technically not consistent with the comp plan and future land use map, we do see that it will match, again, what's expected to be built within that PD as it develops, which will include that mixed-use district that emphasizes similar types of uses. And the applicant's business model will be by appointment only, and so despite having that huge parking lot, they will actually have minimal impact on the traffic. By five-zero vote, planning commission recommended approval.
Any questions for staff? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor? We're getting to see Scott a lot tonight.
Hey, Scott Cogburn, I want to do West Oak Street, beautiful Whitewood Park neighborhood downtown Fort Mill. Hey, in support of this project, this is a great little rec project that's coming to York County. If they did this project in Mecklenburg County, their property taxes would be half of what our property taxes are in the Fort Mill School District. So this is no tax breaks or any tax incentives or anything, so this is a nice thing for our community and our children. Thank you for your time.
Hi, County Council. I'm Cohen McAlpine. I'm at one-six-eight-two-five here at Last Lane. Here to speak on behalf of, the owner of the property is Demon Development, but the operating company is Tread Athletics LLC. And so here to kind of talk about that. Don't certainly want to take a lot of your time. Excited to meet each one of you, kind of in due process of expanding our operations to York County. Ultimately, we identified this site as a potential opportunity for us to not just build another business location, but ultimately a destination for players and athletes all around the globe. We have clients in all fifty U.S. states, twenty-five different countries. We also don't have a local presence, really, and we're looking to change that. And so this expansion really feeds into what that may look like for York County. But I can kind of briefly go through what we do as a company. And so we work in sports performance, so as much as it's, you know, health and fitness and wellness, it's specifically used to, in the majority, high-level amateurs into professional clientele. We've not historically had a youth presence. The primary reason for that is that it requires square footage. Square footage requires funds and it's taken me nearly a decade of time from the age of eighteen, starting this in my dorm room at Clemson University as a baseball player, to build the substance that is required to continue to maintain the level of integrity that is required to run an operation that involves young people. And the kind of history around youth sports and as it continues to kind of progress, it is an incredibly competitive space and unfortunately does not maybe manifest the types of kind of systems and infrastructure and support that we're looking for our young people. And so, again, it's taken about a decade of time and maybe fifty-plus thousand hours of hard work, but we have kind of earned the opportunity to expand and we're excited to share in that with York County and bring something that I feel like is a global hub. I think if we talk about the history of, you know, kind of York County as it relates to, you know, kind of the, I don't know why that slide's not in there. As it relates to sports, there's a large baseball for the water tower. There was the Hornets facility was there. Knight Stadium was there until about two thousand thirteen. And this development, by far and large, has been kind of stagnant since about two thousand and fifteen when it was bought out of foreclosure. And this was big fireworks and Mosquito Joe's was the subtenant of that. Before that, it was Baldur Electric. And so we have kind of procured this space as, and we will be the only tenant in the space. And we procured it to support kind of our expansion. So we're excited to bring this to York County, excited to answer your questions, kind of embrace the community with open arms and lead out the types of initiatives that we really feel like move sports forward, move young people forward in kind of their high pursuits. So happy to address maybe any questions here, but would open it back up to you for any of those questions.
Not hearing any questions. Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak in favor? Do we have a motion to close?
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
Motion and a second to close. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion is approved. Move now to our first item of old business. And only item of old business. Counsel to consider amending and second reading of an ordinance reviewing and updating the public education facilities. Impact fee imposed on all new residential development in Clover School District Number Two pursuant to York County Ordinance Number Thirty-Twenty. To revise the established impact fee on new residential development for a single-family detached dwelling unit to fifteen thousand thirty-five dollars. To revise the established impact fee for a multifamily dwelling unit to seven thousand four hundred thirty dollars. And to revise the established impact fee for a manufactured home unit to nine thousand eight hundred forty-two dollars. To authorize a revised intergovernmental agreement between York County and the Clover School District Number Two defining the respective rights, responsibilities, and obligations of the parties regarding the impact fee. To provide for public hearing and to provide for other matters relating thereto. Before we have a motion, we did have some questions that council had asked prior to, at the end of the last meeting. And there was information that was supplied, I know from the school district, they submitted some written responses that were circulated to council last week. And also had some questions for management. Some of them were executive session questions, some of those are factual questions. I think the best way to handle this is, first up, I do want to make sure that I recognize our superintendent from Clover Schools who has requested to present the information and to provide a response to that, so...
All right, thank you, Madam Chairwoman and members of the council, for this opportunity to clarify questions that you raised and expressed at the last meeting. First and foremost, you should know that Clover School District truly appreciates the time and sincere deliberations that you are giving to this issue. Clearly, our community is very passionate about this topic and you have received a great deal of communication from them, both direct and indirect. Our school board members want you to know that we understand this is a challenging decision and we appreciate all that you're doing to carefully consider the information. So to that end, I want to briefly touch on the questions and answers that we provided to the council ahead of this meeting, and these were the questions that you expressed in your last meeting. So first, you asked if there were any new projects in the capital improvement plan. The scope of our CIP, capital improvement plan, has remained unchanged. It included an elementary space for capacity now called Liberty Hill Elementary School. It had high school capacity now called Lake Wiley High School, which in the opening of will create space for our third middle school because it's currently housing our ninth-grade campus. It also included eleven new activity buses, which was a question I'll address in just a minute. Our projects are ongoing and as you have heard many times, they're over budget. We did a twenty-twenty-five impact fee study to confirm that the maximum supportable fee that we asked you for in twenty-twenty was still supported because we weren't required to do a new capital improvement plan. That's not done until every ten years, but we were required to justify that the impact fee that we currently are asking for can still be supported. And as you know, the new study confirmed an even higher fee than the twenty-twenty amount. And again, we are only asking for the maximum allowable from twenty-twenty. We will do a new capital improvement plan closer to twenty-twenty-nine that will have new projects, but we want to finish these projects in this plan now. The second question you asked was the total amount of funding being requested and what it's specifically being used for. The South Carolina Development Fee Act recognizes, excuse me, that it is difficult to forecast the exact cost of future capital improvements. Therefore, the act seeks to balance those uncertainties by using impact fees to offset the costs of projects. Our CIP in twenty-twenty estimated an elementary school for thirty-nine million. The twenty-twenty-five cost was fifty-six. It estimated a high school at a hundred and seventy-two million. The twenty-twenty-five cost was a hundred and ninety-one. It estimated activity buses at a hundred and ten thousand. The twenty-twenty-five cost was a hundred and forty-four. Our district is seeking to offset these increases by using impact fees, which is exactly what impact fees are to be used for. And it allows for growth to pay for the cost of these increases rather than our taxpayers. Third, you asked if a stadium at Lake Wiley High School was intended in the high school and what its defined costs in the CIP were. The district completed a ten-year facility study in our CIP in twenty nineteen-twenty in preparation for our first bond referendum. In that CIP, the stadium was in the scope of the high school plans and was estimated at six-point-two-five million. Wow, I would have loved to have gotten that cost. I gave you an artifact in the write-up to show that. The CIP was updated in twenty-twenty-two for our second bond referendum with a cost estimate now at ten million. I gave you an artifact that showed that as well. Ultimately, our board agreed that a hundred and seventy-two million would be our bond referendum request. This amount became the working budget for the entire high school project. Our board's goal was to stretch those funds to get the school to be a twenty-one-hundred student enrollment, a twenty-four-hundred core, and as much of the athletic package as we could afford. However, due to the timing of when we bid our high school, it became clear that we were at the top of the construction market cost and getting everything we wanted in the high school was going to be challenging unless we were willing to raise taxes, which I will remind you, we have not done so far. Impact fees are a legitimate way that we plan to deal with the cost overages. And if we had received the maximum allowable in twenty-twenty, we would have fully covered the cost of these escalations I've just described with impact fees. That is why we're back now. That's why we did an updated study to prove to you that those fees were still viable and to help us finish the job. And finally, I'll remind you that in both Fort Mills and Clover's impact fee applications, which you have reviewed now twice for both of us, the full cost of the high school, including stadiums, were in the single number that was presented in the study. The stadiums are not required to be broken out separately and we did not break it out separately. We have not built our high school stadium yet, but we plan to do so after the opening of our high school. And now we're in a much more competitive and favorable construction market and we hope to get a better bid. Fourth, you asked specifically about the number of activity buses we are looking to purchase. The study indicated that we had twenty-one and there was some confusion, were we asking for twenty-one more? No, we're not. We're projecting a need for twelve additional activity buses to accommodate two high schools, three middle schools, and eight elementary schools with field trips, athletics, arts, and all of the things you need activity buses for. Fifth, you asked how much of the capital projects in our capital improvement plan have been bonded via short-term or long-term bonds? And you asked how much can be paid by impact fees. To be clear, a hundred and fifty-six million of the projects will be paid for by long-term bonds approved for, approved by our voters in the twenty-twenty-two bond referendum. Sixteen million will be funded by district capital funds that we've saved over the last several years. And the remaining deficit, including the stadium, will be paid for by a combination of short-term eight-percent bonds and special obligation bonds and impact fees. Please consider the maximum impact fee to help us allocate as much of those funds so that we don't have to do more short-term bonding. And sixth, finally, the council expressed some concern about Clover School District's low debt service millage compared specifically to York School District One's millage. On the surface, it appears that Clover School District's debt service levy at forty-six mills is significantly lower than York's at ninety-three mills. But it is not an apples-to-apples comparison. Clover School District's debt service mill is a four-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand for one mill, while York School District's debt service mill is a hundred-and-sixty-six thousand for one mill. So for example, if there is a capital project that costs a million dollars, Clover would need to levy approximately two mills, while York would need to levy almost six mills for the same amount of money. It is a fact that we are, it is a fact that we are trying to keep our debt service mills to where our voters approved at forty-six. But we haven't been able to keep our operational mills as low because as you're growing, you're adding teachers. So controlling our debt service by using impact fees was really important. So I want to thank you for a chance to answer these questions here tonight and on paper, and I'll be glad to take any other questions you may have at this time.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions from council?
Okay. Management, can I ask a management question?
Do you have any questions for you?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Going to have a motion first?
Actually, we need to get, we're going to get some information from management. Thank you, ma'am. We also asked management to, I thought one of the important things was to follow up on some of the questions that we had as well. We asked management to provide some details and I think y'all provided some stuff in the email. One of the questions was of the twenty, in the report of the twenty-three thirty-six new homes on the books, how many of them are located inside the urban services boundary? And y'all provided a map and that, is that something that you were prepared to share with council or?
We provided y'all the map and an email. I think there were three neighborhoods on that map that the question was, are they in the urban service boundary? And one of them, Shepherd's Trace, was half in it. So of those three that aren't in there, there's about thirty-one lots that haven't been built on.
All of the, so all of the ones that were contemplated in the current CIP or that justified the needs in the current CIP? All of them except a handful are inside the USB? All right. Any other questions for management?
I do. Okay, so I had requested, what is QTS providing funding for, to the schools? The amount? So can you answer that question or maybe Tom can answer that question?
Yeah. In addition, we provide this in email as well.
Well, yes, but I wanted a definite amount.
Well, there's not a definite with construction. We don't know... We don't know when they're going to be done, right? So that's a big question mark. So in talking with QTS, their plan is to be done in the next three years. And so, you know, potentially, they'll be done in 2027. So the first year that it will be on the tax record will be in 2028. And so say they're done with Phase One, which is that $900 million investment. Potentially, that's about $5 million for the Clover School District. But it's all about timing and when they're done and how much.
Well, I just wanted to know how much, when they get them.
So based on our estimates and conversations with QTS, the hope is that in that three-year period, they're done, and it should generate about $5 million a year, those first five years.
But it'll go up as they progress?
Yeah, the way the deal was structured, I think it goes up every five years. It goes up 5%. But we can give you more details on that.
All right. If there are no other questions for management, do we want a motion for executive session to get some information? Or y'all want to make a motion and jump right in?
I'd like executive session. So I make a motion to go to executive session.
Second.
To receive legal advice.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All's favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, we'll go into executive session. We are out of executive session. No action was taken. We left council to receive legal advice and are now back in session on the one item of old business. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Motion fails for lack of a second. Is there another motion?
Motion to defer for further legal advice.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All's favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No. Uh, one, two, three, four. Motion carries four to two. All right. Let me get back to my agenda. We have one item of new business. Discuss and recommend PNOT Medical Center Board nominees. All right. Do we have any nominations for the board?
I have nomination, Bowleg. Did you say Bowleg?
Same for me, Bowleg for the western side.
Do we have any other nominations?
Britt Blackwell for the at-large. And I reached out to three members of the current board, governing board for the hospital, asked for names. One of those three sent me names, but I have not had a chance to call and ask them if they're interested in serving, so I'm certainly not going to submit those names tonight. Getting this in our packet on Thursday, and I typically don't read it until 5 o'clock Saturday morning and, you know, go through the agenda, doesn't give you much time to really do your due diligence on this. So is this defended at the night? Are we going to have more time to submit? Maybe the next meeting, submit another name or two?
I believe the nominations were made known to council for a while.
I apologize. I gotta be honest, I never, I didn't see it. I apologize.
At this point, yeah.
Two spots.
Yeah, there's two spots.
You got two nominations.
So we've got two. Did we get a second on Mr. Blackwell? Not that we, okay. So we have two nominations for the two vacant positions.
Just to answer the question, you know, the timing is so that the hospital has time with their board to vet the recommendations and then have them seated in time for when the vacancies occur, which is in January.
All right. So is there anything that we need to? All those in favor of approving these two nominees for these two vacant positions? What is it?
It says they want us to suggest three names from the western and three for the at-large, or else we're not doing that.
I know that they may have requested it, but.
That doesn't matter. Okay.
All right. So we have two nominations, Bowleg and Britt Blackwell. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Committee and other reports. Public Works Committee Chairman Bump Rody.
Yeah, we had the pleasure of meeting on Wednesday, October 22nd. Myself, Councilman Litten and Councilman Cloninger were in attendance. We met at 6:00 PM here in council chambers. We got an update from staff on potential costs of the animal control facility. We were made aware that they made a visit to, I think it was Gulliford County in North Carolina to their animal shelter. They're narrowing down, you know, some of the needs, how it, they really liked that facility. So I think what we're going to be looking at is something model similar or close to that in functionality and in size. We talked about keeping it cost as close to $16 million, but definitely under $20 million. A few things were discussed by staff. They looked at some options that other counties were doing to help curb some of the intake to animal control. One thing that I particularly like was they brought up the fact that if you're going to be a breeder, that you become a registered breeder through some kind of channel with the county or become a licensed breeder. I do know from past experiences, some of our volunteer groups have kept a close eye on people who breed animals, and they have no way of knowing who's legit, who's not. And I think if we bring into the fold a way for them to become recognized as a legal breeder, it helps take some of those pressures off, some of the scrutiny and eyes on them who may be doing it properly versus those who are doing it illegally. Because if you're a legal breeder, then you're going to do things above board, and you have a responsibility to do them right. Some of the other things that were already vetted that staff still brought back was talking about pet registration. I think we've already vetted that one in the past several years. And limitations on the number of pets, dogs, cats. I think we've already vetted that one several years ago, and I don't think that was a good, I don't think it'll be a good thing or good fit for the county. But still got some more updates to come. But that's just basically, we got a pretty general update.
Thank you, sir. We do not have any citizen concerns tonight. Do we have any council member, non-agenda comments?
Yes. The Veterans Day celebration will be Saturday, November 8th, 2025. In York, the parade will start at 10:00 and the ceremony at 10:30 at the park. When that bug come.
Okay. Planning and zoning committee, we've got some things that were referred to this committee. One is the urban service boundary. And I guess looking at forming a committee about the urban service boundary. And then split zoning. Planning has told me that they have a solution for this. So we need to talk about what the solution is. Also, I would like to pick up on something that you said, Chairman, about non-conforming lots, that there just seems to be a lot of, still some issues with that. So I think that that's something that we need to look at with our zoning updates.
So I guess I need to ask the question. Typically, we get from our manager, typically, we get a request in an email if there's a staff request for referral to a committee.
Yes.
I mean, with the USB, I had a bunch of questions with that. Are y'all still? Typically, what we've done with the USB is that has been done in connection with the comprehensive plan, and you've appointed the same. I know that there's been some back-and-forth discussion. Is that something that we really need to have a second? I don't want to duplicate things. We've got our plan coming up for review next year. Why wouldn't that be done all at the same time?
Well, I know, I'm going to let Assistant Manager Tom Couch speak to that, as I know he's been answering your questions related to that request. And those were both two items that we shared in the memo to the full council as potential items to assign to committee.
Thank you, Mr. County Manager. I think the purpose of trying to form the USB committee, while it's concurrent with the comprehensive plan update, it does provide an opportunity for other jurisdictions to be involved, especially those jurisdictions that have utilities, whether it's primarily water and sewer, but electric as well. And it's really a growth management tool. If you select the USB, if you define it in the map through this type of collaborative arrangement, it gives you the chance to control the growth a little bit better. I know we are getting growth pressures to move more in the western part of the county, but chances are, we don't want to flex the boundary too much. It could be worthwhile to run it through the P&amp;Z committee to just have a discussion or another check. You know, how do we want to form it? How do we want to educate ourselves on its usefulness? Because, you know, it is done every five years, although I think, Mr. Bono, this is going to be a 10-year update with the comprehensive plan. Is that correct? So I think that puts the onus on us to make sure that the boundary is selected thoughtfully. And I don't know if you had anything further to add about the history, because I don't have the history here, but we did have a committee prior to the last planning update, and I assume everybody came to a good consensus with it at that time.
Yeah, and I'll just add that it is a strategic plan initiative to form an Urban Services Boundary Committee to update that. And I think it really serves as a good jumping point to start off the comp plan update. So it's going to be a 10-year update. And having that USB looked at and adjusted accordingly is really a good spot to start analysis of what needs to happen within and without. So I think that's the first and foremost line that should be done as part of the comp plan update.
All right. So council, my personal opinion is that the non-conforming and the split zoning, I certainly don't have an issue with that being referred to planning and zoning. I think for a variety of reasons that the USB, that we should hold off on that. That's my opinion, though. I mean, I guess I need to hear from y'all. What do y'all want to? Do you have objections or comments or?
Hold off on the USB as well?
Well, will it be determined by whenever we all start doing our small area plans? Is that going to affect any of that?
I don't think it would impede doing a small area plan. But I think what we're seeing is a little bit of synergy now. I feel like a small area plan is going to move fairly quick for the Newport area. So, you know, I think all of these things can be done concurrently. And quite frankly, the USB is optional. It's not mandated by South Carolina growth management laws. But I do think it's a good tool. It's sort of a hybrid from what they call in the planning profession an urban growth boundary. But it's more of a USB instead of a USG because of the utilities factor. And with the plethora of utilities and municipalities we have, I personally think it's a good, and professionally think that it's a good practice. But I think that the council has to be comfortable as a group in going forward with it.
Why don't we do this? I mean, we're not going to, we're actually talking about some things that deal with the USB tonight. I mean, let's go ahead and we'll refer the split zoning and the non-conforming uses to the planning and zoning committee. I'm sure y'all have some other things. And we can revisit the USB in another month for whatever.
Can I add one other thing?
Yeah.
I want us to look into what I talked about earlier about on these time limits, on how long they have.
I have that.
I'm drawing a blank. What we're talking about.
That's an illegal question, County Attorney.
All right. Any?
Okay.
Okay, so the Post and Courier had an initiative where they did a survey, and you got to vote on best of the best of the best. And so basically, one thing that was very significant to all of us is the fact that the Bethel Lake Wiley Park District got the best green initiative. They were voted the best. And I think they choose about, anywhere from five to 10 initiatives. So that was very, very nice.
Any other council member?
Yeah, just quickly. I've heard on the radio this morning that Yana Kurokuratin, he is heading up Men on a Mission. Burns Automotive Group actually gave him a truck, I guess in the last week or so, a long bed truck of theirs they took out of commission. I just, it says a lot about what he's doing as he partners with Keep York County Beautiful and what he's doing in York County to, you know, keep litter picked up. He and the men that do that, they volunteer to do it. It's pretty incredible. But, you know, I had no idea that they actually had a nonprofit, a legitimate not-for-profit, Men on a Mission. It's pretty neat. Appreciate his service to York County.
Real quick, I think we need to have, I'm going to ask staff to look into ways of crafting something that we can use as a tool for ethical conduct by our board members. We've seen some incidents that happen involving board members, even here in this chamber, of how they're to conduct themselves. If they're going to represent us on boards and commissions, then I know we have a thing in place that excludes them for becoming board members upfront. But I don't think we have any language that distinguishes what will disqualify a board member going forward once they've seated on a board for his personal conduct, whether it's involving that board or not. I just want staff to kind of massage that, take a look at it, and see if there's things that we can put in place that keeps our boards and commission members in line for acceptable conduct.
Is that a committee assignment request?
Which committee would that go to? I think it usually would be either JPS.
Oh, Lord. Somebody said they don't want it. Time's here, don't want it. Oh, I agree, I'm upset with you, but I sure don't want it.
They're using me.
Why don't we refine that? I seem to recall there was another, and I'm not even sure, was the issue that was put to the JPS about trying to realign board member appointees to coincide? We talked about this at the very beginning of the year, and I just don't know where that ended up. Has that been resolved?
No.
That is next meeting? Well, I mean, if there's no objection, do folks want, are there specific things that we want the committee to take a look at? Are you objecting to that?
No. I mean.
I think if we're looking at ethics, let's look at it for all, let's look at it for the whole. Let's look it at for everybody. Anybody, us and the board?
I would include council and board members. I would make it all inclusive, not just committee members.
If there's no objection, you're willing to tackle that one? All right. Anybody else?
Wagga, wagga, wagga.
Non-agenda comments? All right. Do we have a motion for executive session?
Motion for executive session. Receipt of legal advice, legal matters and litigation update, contractual matter for Project Sample. Receipt of legal advice and contractual matter for the interstate exchanges.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are out of executive session. No action was taken. Do we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, we are adjourned.